That's good.
Oh, yeah. It is six o'clock and we will call the city council meeting to order on June, July, July, I'm in the wrong month, July 26th at six o'clock. Councilman, Ms. Hughes, are you ready for?
I am.
Your invocation, thank you.
Please stand with me.
Please stand. Heavenly Father, bless us all as we gather here tonight. Guide us to do what brings glory to you and to our community. Continue to protect this council, our citizens, and especially our frontline workers. And Lord, please bring us rain, heal our land, grow our fields, and feed our livestock. We ask for relief from this heat and that you shield us from potential fires that threaten our parched ground. Cover our first responders with a blanket of protection so they can continue to serve and protect us. We thank you for all you give and ask for blessings of peace and grace. We ask these things in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, Stuart, do you have some announcements for us tonight?
Yes, ma'am. Want to say welcome to everybody. We've got a short agenda tonight, so I'll try and be quick, too. Maybe we can be out of here at a decent time. Just a few events, these are all before we meet again next month. Upcoming events at the library. We still have the Summer Reading Book Club Party, which will be tomorrow, July 27th, yeah, that is tomorrow. Talking Texas Book Club, Thursday, July 28th. And we have a family movie next, what is that, August 2nd sometime next week. And Historical Fiction Book Club, August the 4th. You can find out more about any of these on the library page of the city's website. So encourage everybody to take a look. All right. Parks and Rec. We got an adult basketball tournament, and that's going to be this Saturday. Registration deadline will be Friday, the 29th. It's $45 per team. Get the chance to play at the editing center. I don't know, I'm sure all of y'all have been out there, but it's a great, great facility. So I'd love to play on that court. It's very, be a very neat deal for all the teams involved. And then next Friday, not this Friday, but next Friday, August 5th, Movies in the Park back in Louise Hayes Park, and we have The Lion King, which will be a big draw, I'm sure, because that's everybody's favorite. And then two more announcements, or excuse me, one more announcement in case you didn't miss it yesterday. We put the press release out, but the Kerrville River Festival will be coming back Saturday, September 17th. And Kyle Park will be our headline act. Michael Selgato will be leading off before him. Couple of other acts, we're looking forward to that. We'll be releasing more information as we get closer, but that's always a good time in a party, so make plans to be there. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Does anyone on council have anything they would like to share?
I'll just say real quick, so yesterday we had our town hall for our short-term rentals. Very successful. Thank you for everybody who was able to attend and participated. If somehow you missed it and you want to go and see part of it or the whole thing, I believe there was a recording done, this is all I know from, but at least by the lead, if you go to their Facebook page, you can find that entire recording. So very, just want to thank everybody for being there and participating in that and looking forward to council and PZ coming to some type of resolution that will benefit the city.
Thank you. And we do thank all of, everyone who was there last night. We had over, probably had about 120, I think. Shelley, about right? Something like that, close to that. So, thank you. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, it's not city relatedness particularly, but our Western Art Museum was named one of the top 10 art museums in the United States in 2022. So, nice honor. All right, at this time, I'd like to call up those who are receiving awards. And Ashley, if you will come up and do that originally, or originally if you'll stop and.
If you can get the presentation pulled up.
Tan they all are.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight we have a special recognition of our aquatic staff that work at the Olympic Pool during the summer. The pool has seen a record attendance this year, over the past several years. We're seeing on average about 1,500 patrons per week. Opening weekend, we had, throughout that week, we had 2,600 in attendance compared to about 850 the year before. So we're seeing a great attendance at the pool this year, a good news story there. But what I would really like to talk about is this group of dedicated individuals here in front of you. This is our 2022 Competitive Lifeguard Team. They not only keep our pool safe during the summer on a regular basis, but they go above and beyond. They train hard and they compete against other lifeguards in different communities with their aquatic safety skills. Lifeguard competitions are very intense, they're rigorous competitions. They're not just up there running around like Baywatch, it's actually very serious. And they compete, everything that they do, it's unknown. They have no idea what they're walking into. So they could be walking into somebody needing CPR, somebody with an amputated hand, it's just, it's all over the place. And so not only are they judged on how they handle the aquatics emergency, they are judged on their confidence, teamwork, presentation, appearance, emergency management, all while assessing the unknown situations, performing calmly and accurately under pressure. This team is trained and coached by Recreation Manager Rosa Ledesma, and the team trains several hours per week in preparation. They competed at the Central Texas Lifeguard Competition at Schlitterbaum on July 11th. They received third place overall, qualifying them for the state competition. They received third place in the first aid scenario, second place in the CPR scenario, and two of our team were nominated by the judges to receive the top male competitor and a top female competitor awards, a very special honor only given to two. The team qualified for state and they will compete against 11 other teams on August 1st in Brenham. And we are very proud of their hard work and accomplishments of the team, not only at the competition, but for representing us and our organization and community in a first-class manner, enhancing our awareness of aquatic safety and everything aquatics-related. So thank you for everything that you do. We also have some family members here present tonight as well, so thank y'all for coming. And without further ado, I'd like to announce the team members. If you'll hold your applause to the end, we have Kayden Brown, second-year lifeguard. Rosa, you want to assist? Ethan Leahy, Assistant Pool Manager, third-year staff. Bailey Bogus, Pool Manager, fourth-year staff, and she also received the top female award. And Jesus Guzman, Assistant Pool Manager, second-year staff, and he received the top male award. If y'all will join me in recognizing these individuals. Thank y'all so much for everything you do. Mayor, would you like to say anything?
I just want to say, two of my kids are lifeguards, and lifeguarding is always, it's just such a wonderful thing. Everybody wants to do it, just looks like it should be so much fun. And you guys, you work hard out there, and my kids worked hard, so I know, I know what it's like. And in weather like this, we were at the pool this past week, in that heat, I tell you what, I just, my hat goes out to you, because you do a super, super job, and those pools couldn't be open if it weren't for you. So it's, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Picture. Mayor, can we get y'all a little?
Oh, how's their banner?
Hey, if I look right here? Two, three. Thank you. Good, thank you.
We'll get there.
You got it. Good job, guys.
Congratulations, guys. And lady.
All right, at this time, we will have a visitor citizens forum. Shelley, will you read us in, please?
Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the city council. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out the speaker request form and give it to the city secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted to the city secretary before the item is called or read into record. City council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the item on a future agenda. Each speaker is limited to four minutes. Mayor, we do have two citizen speakers signed up. Brad Barnett.
Good evening, Brad.
Good evening, council. And after seven years as a lifeguard, many, many decades ago, note, like you said, Mayor, the hard work that they put in. So congratulations to them. I am Brad Barnett, President and CEO of the Kerrville Area Chamber of Commerce, 1700 Sidney Baker Suite 100. Attainable housing continues to be a challenge for the state of Texas and for our community. And I want to share with the council and our community what the chamber is doing to lead and inspire our community to move forward to overcome these challenges. Last November, the chamber held a town hall forum. After that meeting, then-Mayor Blackburn asked the chamber to take over his commission on housing that he had started to try to come up with a solution. Since then, the Chamber of Commerce Housing and Development Committee has met monthly. This committee is made up of business leaders and local developers. To ensure that our goals are in line with the city's 2050 master plan, the mayor and the assistant city managers sit on the committee as a non-voting member. It's important for us to come together as a team to seek creative solutions to meet the needs that face Kerrville today and to position us for a strong future. The two goals of this committee are to educate businesses and citizens on the current need and to come alongside and support developers as they add housing units to our community. Over the coming months, the Chamber of Commerce will begin to get information out to the public, primarily through our digital newsletter. So anybody that is not on that list, you do not have to be a member of the chamber, reach out, that goes out every Wednesday. And if you've been getting that and aren't now, reach out. Once we switched to the dot biz last year, I think a lot of our stuff goes into spam. So if you're not getting that information for the chamber, absolutely reach out to us. We feel that it is critical for Kerrville's quality of place to work toward a solution to our housing needs. And without attainable housing, our local businesses can't operate. They, they don't have employees, and when we go to a restaurant, then parts of the restaurant are closed. And so this is critical to overcome, and if we don't solve the problem, our money's going to Fredericksburg, Bernie, San Antonio, and outside of the state. So it's important that we address these issues now. For anybody that thinks these aren't serious issues, Peterson Health, in the past several months, has lost at least 10 people that either did not accept a job or left because they couldn't find housing. So when our largest employer is having issues, think how difficult that is for our small businesses, which make up the vast majority. I think over 90% of our businesses have 20 employees or less. So this is definitely a huge issue, and I'm sure most of you in here, if you are business owners, have your own stories that echo what Peterson has dealt with. I want to thank the council for the proactive work that you guys have been doing to solve this problem. But the city council can't solve this housing issue alone. This is going to take a community effort with bankers, developers, and community input to come up with creative solutions. And again, I know you guys have already started this, and so have we. So I just want to encourage local businesses and citizens, if you have ideas or suggestions, reach out to the chamber. It's, it's important for us, as we move Kerrville forward to 2050 and beyond, that it is a place that, good quality of place, people want to live here. Thank you guys for the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think it's important to, and Brad has talked about this, that committee is not trying to take over for the city. They're not trying to do what, take the city's role in any way, shape, or form. They are in advocacy for the fact that we need housing and working, we'll work with the city and we'll work with other groups, but when it comes to all those permits and all those, those meetings that need to go on, that will still happen with the city.
Yeah, we don't want that extra work.
Important. So thank you for what you're doing, we appreciate it.
Karen Guerrero. Good evening, Mayor, city council, and city staff. I thought I had three minutes, but I have four, so I'll just, I'll just speak slow, and I'll relax a little bit more, because I was going to try to get it all in in three minutes. My name's Karen Guerrero, 307 Lakewood. I'm not sure if I need to say my address or not. I am the president of Kerrville Pets Alive. KPA is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization serving Kerr County. Our mission is to save Kerr County pets from euthanasia. We do this by providing monetary support, volunteers, and resources to Kerr County Animal Services. We also help pet owners stay home and safe by providing pet owners in need with pet food, medical care, and many other resources. We believe one of the most needed services in our community is spaying and neutering of our Kerrville resident pets. We thank the city of Kerrville for providing funds this past year to sterilize 50 Kerrville pets to date, and we are still counting. Our initial plan involved working with a Kerrville Veterinary Office partner to distribute discount vouchers. We handed out 30 vouchers to Kerrville pet owners in just over one hour at our office. Pet owners were lined up at our door and very grateful. It was a beautiful thing. Our plan was met with challenges along the way, including the effects of COVID and a shortage of veterinarians in our area, which is also a problem across the country. Spay-neuter appointments had to be scheduled three and four months out, which is not soon enough for those pet owners. We then changed gears, as Kerrville Pets Alive seems to do, when we have an issue, we're going to fix it. So we directed the funds to spay-neuter efforts for city residents through three other area veterinarians. We also funded 15 surgeries in one day through the Big Fix Organization, who services cat colonies, they're managed by individuals. We plan to continue work with these vets and programs to offer surgeries through October the 1st, which will be the end of the agreement with the city of Kerrville. We hope that the city will support our efforts in the coming year by providing funding for not only just spay-neuter surgeries, but vaccinations and health and wellness resources. There are so many pet owners in need right now, and Kerrville Pets Alive is helping them as much as they can. I have time left, so I'm going to say that, that we have homeless people that come to our office, it's heartbreaking, and it's their only thing they have in life, you know? Sorry, it makes me emotional. Our goal with this program is to maintain a healthy and safe community for Kerrville pet owners and their pets. Thanks to, thanks to you, and this is a big number, approximately 1,200 lives were saved, and our pet overpopulation has been lessened. I'm sorry I'm so emotional, but it's an emotional thing that we do every day. So we hope that you continue the support.
Absolutely. Thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. You guys do a great job for us.
Thank you. It's exhausting and it's heartbreaking, so thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you, thank you, thank you. How many, how many volunteers do you have now, Karen?
Well, we have about, signed up, we have about, gosh, over 150. But active volunteers, I would say probably about 40 or so is everything from behind, the keyboard warriors that are trying to save animals and connect with people. We have disabled people that help us. We have people that help with events, we have hands-on shelter. So we always need more volunteers, but it's about, we have a huge volunteer base, and they do so many different things, but we can always use, use more.
Well, and, and if I can add to what Karen was saying, one of the challenges that, that the citizens have is if they adopt an animal from the shelter that would normally be euthanized after 72 hours, and, you know, the shelter filling up, the, the shelter only gives them 30 days to get their animals, animals spayed-neutered. And if you don't, then they fine you, and they write you a ticket. And we cannot get, Kerrville Pets Alive cannot get veterinarians to be able to schedule those surgeries within 30 days. As a matter of fact, it's about four months out right now. So that's what happened with the voucher system, is that they couldn't meet the demands, the, the time demands of the shelter, and had to go ahead and, and go out of county to get their animal spayed-neutered. So we, I just wanted to add that. So, thank you both. Appreciate it. All right, at this time, we are ready for the consent agenda. Shelley?
The city council workshop minutes, July 12th, 2022. The minutes, the city council meeting minutes, July 12th, 2022. The city council workshop minutes, July 19th, 2022. And the city council and Kerrville Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Meeting, July 21st, 2022. We don't have any citizens hold any items.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve consent agenda items for A, for B, for C, and for D.
Second? All in favor? Right hand, please, thank you. And they are, that is approved. All right. Our first possible action tonight is number five. Shelley, if you'll read that in.
Resolution number 42-2022. A resolution authorizing the transfer of the ownership of funds from the city of Kerrville to the city of Kerrville Employee Benefit Trust to pay for employer-related group benefits for fiscal year 2023. And we do not have any citizen speakers signed up.
Kim?
Okay. So we're going to talk about employee benefits. You just met during the workshop as the Employee Benefit Trust trustees, you had that hat on, and you approved the benefits during that meeting, and this meeting will be to fund the benefits. But I wanted to let the public and the community know a little bit about what the benefit trust is. So in July of 2020, I'm sorry, 2008, city council approved a resolution to create the Employee Benefit Trust. And what that is, is Chapter 222.002 of the Texas Insurance Code, and that imposes a 1.75% tax that is insured, that is imposed on insurers for gross premiums received from their policyholders. And so if we establish either a single entity benefit trust or establish or participates in a Chapter 172 risk pool, we can be, we cannot have, be exempt from paying those taxes. And so we did that in 2008. This is the amount of money that we saved over the years from fiscal year 2009 all the way through 2022 so far, and that is $657,274 by being part of the benefit trust and by the council during that time, creating the Employee Benefit Trust. So every year, just to make, make sure that we are providing our benefits at the most reasonable cost, we go out to a bid, we have a bid process, and we receive two bids for our medical insurance and multiple bids for our ancillary benefits. Blue Cross Blue Shield came back with a 13.5% increase. They were going to give us the same plan that we currently have, so there wouldn't be any plan changes, but it was a 13 and a half percent increase. United Healthcare also bid on our coverage, and they came back with a 7% increase, which I thought was really good, but it had major plan changes and no out-of-network benefits. So if our employees were out of state or somewhere else, they might not have benefits during that time, and so that kind of knocked them out. So we went to negotiate with Blue Cross Blue Shield. The problem was, was we have a loss ratio right now with Blue Cross Blue Shield at 96%. The loss ratio is based on premiums paid versus claims paid. So our premiums that we pay every month are a certain amount, and the claims during that month are 96% of the premium. So basically, Blue Cross Blue Shield is not making a lot of profit on us, which made a very challenging negotiation situation. We did begin the negotiations with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they came back with a best and final offer with package savings for our other benefits with a 5% increase and no plan changes, which we were very happy about. So approximately about $161,000 increase, and the package savings includes dental, vision, life A D and D, voluntary life A D and D, and short-term disability, all at the same rates and the same plans. So tonight, as council, due to the action taken by the trustees of the city of Kerrville Employee Benefit Trust during the workshop, we ask that you approve the FY 2023 Employee Benefit Plans. Staff recommends that council adopt Resolution Number 42-2022, approving the transfer of funds from the city of Kerrville to the city of Kerrville Employee Benefit Trust to pay for FY 2023 employee benefits in an amount not to exceed $9,107 per employee, per year, for the year. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for her? No. Joe, what was your question upstairs? You might ask that again.
Are the employees happy with the plan?
The employees are very happy with the plan, and so is the medical community is happy with Blue Cross Blue Shield serving us as well.
Okay. And we thank you for your good negotiating skills.
Thank you.
Do a good job there. All right, do we have a motion for? I'll make a motion, Mayor, that we adopt Resolution Number 42-2022, approving the transfer of funds from the city of Kerrville to the city of Kerrville Benefit Trust to pay for fiscal year 2023 employee benefits in an amount not to exceed $9,107 per employee. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor? Right hand? Thank you, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim. Next, 5B, Shelley?
Between Kerrville Independent School District and the city of Kerrville for provision of school resource officers, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Mayor, council? Mayor, council, thank you for having me. We're looking at a new agreement for our school resource officer program with the Kerrville Independent School District. It's a program that's been in existence for over a decade and a half. We've supplied school resource officers in one form or another, either to Tybee High School or to both Tybee and Howell Peterson. Currently, we have two school resource officers working in our schools, Officer Aaron Boras and Officer Justin Gonzalez. As we look to move forward with this agreement, we look to add two additional school resource officer positions in order to help cover the elementary schools within our community. They would share, those two positions would share those responsibilities and, and move around the schools. As part of this agreement, we will continue our 5-6 sharing of salary and benefits, but we also include a 5-6 sharing plan to include equipment, uniforms, and training of officers as well. The schools throughout the summer, we and the schools, we being the Kerrville Police Department, along with KISD, have met numerous times in discussions of school safety. We've reviewed safety plans within the schools, reunification plans. We've done onsite visits with several of the elementary schools. We are making plans to increase our ability to respond inside those schools with KISD partnering with them in terms of equipment that we may deploy at those schools. So we have a great working relationship. We've had a great working relationship in the past, and we present this opportunity to you tonight to continue to strengthen that relationship and provide safety in our schools.
Chief, have you, have you guys done any active shooter training exercises at the schools specifically?
We have in the past, and we will be this week. In fact, our, our SOU team will be doing training within the schools. They'll also be doing walkthroughs through several of, of the campuses. On our Special Operations Unit, we have three field training officers. Our plan is for them to take a look at those schools during that training, and then bring that training back to their shifts and try to walk their shifts through those schools and give them idea of layout. We're sending two individuals to alert, train the trainer in September, so we will have trainers in-house to conduct that training in the future.
Okay, good. That was a question I had, Chief, and so it sounds like all of your officers will be familiar with the school buildings.
Yes, ma'am. We think that's important.
Even though they won't physically be there all the time, but?
Yes, ma'am. We believe that's important. In fact, we have four officers currently in what we refer to as our mini-academy. They graduated from the academy several weeks ago prior to deploying to field training, and part of that is becoming familiar with the schools, their locations, and their layouts.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody?
Part of the agreement talks about a funding portion of it, so 5-6 by KISD and 1-6 by the city, but I can't find a number for that. Can you give me an update on that? We're looking at that.
So, so that will be, that will be dependent upon what officer goes to the schools. They would like a itemized bill for that, so depending on what that officer's salary is, that could change. I could give you an idea right now, based on one of our officers in, in the schools. If we were conducting this, this sharing currently, the total expense would be $126,712, and of that, $104,000. And of that, a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars would go to the schools. Uh, that would include salary benefits, equipment.
Okay. And I don't know if this is a question for you, Chief, or for our Director of Finance, but where is that, like, where do we put that in the budget? Like, where, where, where do we find that and allocate that from?
Our operational costs, uh, within, well, it's actually a couple of different areas. So one is built within the departmental budget of, uh, K P D. Uh, it's also within our asset replacement program in regards to some of the, uh, equipment costs, such as vehicles.
Okay. Okay. That answers it. Thank you.
I would just like to add that I know in light of all the things that have been happening in our world lately, um, that, that their presence there is so important. But there's another aspect that I didn't, never even realized until I talked to, um, one of the, uh, officers that was at the school for a number of years. It's the relationship that those officers develop with so many of those kids. And what a role model they become for those kids. And I think right now, uh, you know, safety is everything that we're thinking about. But there is another aspect that is just really important. And, uh, I, I never even thought about it, even having taught and, but we didn't have officers there then, I guess that made a difference. But it, it does make a difference in more ways than one, so.
It definitely creates a bridge, uh, for those kids, uh, from, from school age all the way into adulthood. The officers that work at the school many times, uh, have that, that connection all the way into adulthood.
And I think now having it in our elementary, it also, it's, it's going to, uh, maybe give, uh, a different light to our police department for the younger kids. And, uh, so important, very important, so. All right, council, do we have a motion?
I'll move to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute the inner local agreement between K I S D and the city of Curville for, um, the provision of the school resource officers.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, right hand, please? And it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for the good work you guys do for us. All right. Five C. Shall we?
Service Agreement with Freezing Nicholsing to serve as owner representative for the public safety facility. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Yes, sir.
I'm here tonight to ask you to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional service agreement with Freezing Nichols for the, um, design build of the public safety complex. Uh, with that, we will go through a short presentation. And we do have John New here from Freezing Nichols for additional questions, if you have any. I'd be happy to help, uh, answer any of those questions. The typical, um, you've seen this in your, in previous workshops. Uh, the typical process that we use is the design bid-build process. Uh, you can see there that the owner hires a designer and a builder, um, to do work for us. Uh, there's no link between the designer and the builder. That's inherently the problem. As you go through the design process, we think we got it all figured out when the builder builds it. He says, I think I can build it cheaper if I do X, Y, or Z. And you have some change orders and it costs the city, um, to, to do those change orders.
Just to clarify, Stuart, um, just for the, the public, you know, we're, we're, the explanation of why we want to use a certain process. You said typically the city uses a design bid-build process. Um, and we're identifying that in the, the, um, things that are not, that, that are, um, disadvantages to that system. But in the presentations, if I remember correctly, we talked about why in a lot of cases a city our size has to use that process or, um, not on, not on a construction of a large facility. But I just wanted to be clear to the public, we're not just using typically a process that we find to be disadvantageous. There's some state laws regarding when we can use. Is that right?
Yeah. So it, it depends if it's a, a heavy civil project, which you have to be over a certain population to do that, which Curville's nowhere close, I think it's a hundred thousand people. And so we, we're not eligible to do that. That's typically the, the projects that we do that are, that would kind of suit this kind of construction method. Uh, but this complex actually fits very well with it. You know, we don't build, uh, police and fire complexes very often. And so we are, we're using this because we believe it is, is going to be the most productive method to keep us on budget and keep us moving quickly with our schedule. Um, the, the only drawback, and I'll go to the next slide. This is what we're proposing here, the design build process. And the way that it's organized there is that the owner actually goes out and they hire a team, a design build team, that the architect and the builder are actually working together. Um, but I guess the builder can hire the architect or the architect can hire the builder. They're, they're coming together as a team. So they know each other, they've worked together, they've given us a proposal to say, these are some of the projects we've worked on, we've got a good relationship with one another. We think we're going to work good together and this is what we can do for you. And come, they'll go through that process. The, the state law requires, and what, what you're asking there is that this, the owner's representative, um, on the side. That's the piece, and I'll come back to this slide in just a minute. But Texas Government Code in Chapter, uh, Section three oh five states that the, that the government entity shall select or, or designate an architect or engineer independent of the design build firm to act as the, the governmental's entity representative for the duration of the project. So what that says is that, hey, we, we understand that, um, the cities can benefit from this process. However, we want somebody in your, in your organization or somebody that you've contracted with to firmly understand it and walk you through that whole process. And we feel like that, that, um, individual or those, that team would be Freezing Nichols at this time. So going back to the previous slide, that's the way that record, that relationship would work. We would hire with their, with our design build, um, team and then we'd also contract with Freezing Nichols as our owner's representative. They have a lot of experience building these kind of projects. Um, and we feel comfortable that they are going to help us deliver a very good product for the, for the city. So what would they do? Uh, what would Freezing Nichols do for the city that the, that the architect wouldn't do? Um, they're going to, the, the first item there, they do, it's basically the, help select the, and designate the, the build, the design build team, right? And so the project number one or item number one, that's already been done. That's what we're doing today. And we've talked about it before, that's why we're here tonight to ask for the, for y'all to move forward with the design build process. Uh, number two is a council resolution. We've already done that. Council, uh, made us an authorization where we can actually do the design build process. Um, the next part, problem or the next step will be the qualifications. So we'll go out, just as we did for the H H H C, and ask for the design build team to give us qualifications that, um, just I was telling you earlier. Have they done this work before? They put it together and they presented to us and we get to review those and, and rank them. And out of that ranking, we're going to pull out the, um, the shortlist of those, of those individuals that we think are the best suited for the job. We'll probably shortlist three or five of them somewhere in that neighborhood, depending on how many we get. After that, we'll go back with, with the, um, request for proposals where they will come in and give us, uh, how they propose to build the building, their, kind of their fee system, how it works, how their organization works. And let us kind of understand how all of the billing goes on and nail down the cost, um, to the, not so much the cost, the whole cost of the project, but what their fees will be, what the fees they're going to charge the city. We do also get to tell them how much the cost of the, how much money we have to spend on the building. And so we're able to re- regulate that, or not regulate it, to weigh those two against each other and say, we think, uh, your fees are X, your fees are Y. This is how we think we, how we're going to be able to select that process.
A question for you or for, for John, one. If we're doing, or if this process calls for a request for qualifications, at that point, what understanding of the, of the scope of the project? And, I mean, I, I just wonder, do you ever get in a scenario where someone is qualified and wants to do the job? And then when you come back in with your request for proposals where you start lining out all of the things, how much and, and the, and the scope? And you get a little more specific, that some of those drop out at that, at that point? Or they're very, already very familiar with, with what they're, what they'll be doing?
Yeah, that's a good, a good question. I mean, bo- bottom line is that, that's the intent for the two-step, uh, process. You do R Qs first and then R Ps, because the R Q is, uh, we give them enough information. You see, uh, item number four, there's a design criteria package. They'll have enough information about the project to know that they're going to build a public safety facility of, you know, almost seventy thousand square feet, not a seven-eleven or something like that. So they know what they're getting into. So, uh, when they submit those qualifications packages, that means that they, they know the type of work they're going to be doing. Uh, and then, then we would evaluate those. And as Stuart said, we would possibly shortlist them to three to five. And when we do the R P, there's not going to be, they're going to have enough information where they're not going to necessarily back out because of what we say in the R P. They may have other business reasons, they decide not to pursue it. But it's not going to be because we're not going to put any major surprises in the R P. It's like, well, we weren't expecting that. They're going to know what they're getting into. So the odds of them dropping off, uh, dropping out because of something that we do in the R P is very slim.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's kind of the first part of the project. After we get that, uh, we'll work through the design build, um, agreement with them. I won't go through all of these, but you can kind of see there that they do the pre-construction meter, um, bid packages, review the document, the, the document control, cost modeling, the price, maximum price guarantee. We worked through all that process. That, this is the piece of the work that we're coming to council to ask for tonight is the, kind of the setting up of, everything prior to construction was, is what we're asking tonight for, for your approval for the city manager to, to enter agreement with Freezing Nichols for. Okay? With that, I'll ask and, and answer any questions and, or if John, y'all have any more questions for John, um, be happy to bring him up here.
To clarify, you said everything up to the construction process. So after what we do tonight, we will not be approving the design build team or anything like that? That'll all go forward based on what, what's been laid out? Is that correct?
That's just the services for the owner's rep throughout that process? So council still has a number of, of, uh, approvals that are going to be coming to you, uh, for the design build team and that contract, uh, and, and all of those steps. We just wanted to outline that the scope for this owner's rep is going to carry us through all of that. They're going to be consulting with us and consulting with you all as a council throughout that process.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That was my question too. So it, in the amount that's here, that will be the total amount.
For the owner's rep services.
For the owner's rep.
Through pre-construction.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Now you say through pre-construction.
That's correct.
So there will be another amount.
That's right. Then we'll, then we'll come at that time and we'll have a, a different conversation about that scope of services and what that looks like, because at that point, we'll have a design build team and we'll be able to, um, kind of tell you where we're at in that process.
Okay. So, and I was curious on, uh, so maybe this is, we wouldn't, would, this would not be involved yet. On page six, we've got option one, option two, option three, full-time, part-time, and part, part-time onsite inspection. So that really is not part of what we're approving tonight.
That's correct.
That's correct. It's the, it's A, B, and C is what we're approving tonight. Those future task items, um, to be honest with you, I was supposed to remove those and they, they were on a different, I'd have a cleaner document. But it's all, it also has the same thing other than those task items, just so you wouldn't have that question. It's the same document. Uh, but we're just awarding the three hundred thousand dollars tonight is what we're asking for, yes.
Okay. Okay. And so right now, how many people will that include?
The whole firm's worth. It's a team approach, uh, from them. It's not one individual. And again, that's the benefit, rather than us having to do this in-house. As you all know, we went through the capital improvement, uh, community improvement plan, uh, with you all. We've got over twenty-seven active projects right now. Uh, we don't have the project management capacity to be able to take that on. Uh, and it also provides a unique capability in bringing outside expertise that can help us really, uh, manage that design build team as we're going through the process, make sure that we are getting, uh, the best value and make sure that we are delivering a project in a timely manner.
John, anything else you want to add?
No, ma'am, unless you have any questions.
Anybody?
Is it customary for a municipality or to do two different allocation of funds or two different agreements, I guess? What, yeah, I mean, we're going to do one through pre-construction and then another afterwards.
It's, uh, it's, it's relatively common, yes. Uh, very, very common to do, uh, uh, some type of services up to construction and then you handle construction separately, because, uh, as Stuart said, it kind of depends on who the design builder is. And, uh, you know, it's, it's down the road away, so it's not uncommon at all to divide this into two separate tasks.
And how comfortable we'd be with the builder at that time as to how much services we need.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Kim, comment, question?
No, my question's, my answer, thank you.
Brenda?
I'm good.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a professional service agreement for the scope of service as presented.
Second?
Second.
Joe, thank you. All in favor, right hand, please? And we are unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, John, for being here. We look forward to.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
A good, wonderful project. Thanks, Stuart.
She'll bring us those back next, next council meeting, right?
Yep. All right. Five D. Um. Shall we?
Lease schedule and master lease agreement with John Deere Financial for a sixty-month lease in the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars for six pieces of maintenance equipment for the Scott Shrinor Golf Course. And there are no citizen speakers signed up.
All right.
All right. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, in summary, this is a lease purchase agreement for six pieces of maintenance equipment for the Scott Shrinor Golf Course. Um, their total payments over five years, sixty months will be two hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight fifty-four. Monthly payments will be four thousand, four hundred and forty-seven and fifty-five cents. This expenditure was budgeted and proved in the F Y twenty-two budget. We did recognize the need and we budgeted appropriately for it. Um, I'd like to point out that it's taken nearly a year for us for the equipment to even be available due to supply chain issues. And that's why we're bringing it to you this evening with the lease. Um, staff initiated the procurement process once the budget was adopted last year. It's taken this long. Um, again, this consists, this equipment is consistent with Curville twenty-fifty in regards to taking care of our current infrastructure and investing in our parks. Golf course maintenance is the lifeblood of the course. Um, it's very important to have quality equipment to have quality turf. So here's a couple of pictures, um, of the equipment. We have a, um, hydro bunker rake and the purpose of that is to maintain the sand traps. We have a zero-turn mower and that's for mowing the small rough areas and gra- small rough grass areas. We have the precision-cut triplex screens mower and that's for mowing greens and T-boxes. And then the next three, um, the trim mower for mowing collars around the greens and T-boxes because those are different heights. Uh, the prograder for hauling equipment and for top dressing, and then the fairway mowers. And the reason why we have several different mowing equipment is because to maintain a golf course, it's maintained different, the fairways, the greens, the collars are all different heights and, which requires different equipment. And the current equipment that we have is nearly twenty years old. That's why we're bringing you this lease purchase. We're in need, we're in dire need of new equipment for the course in order to maintain it. And staff recommendation is to authorize the city manager to finalize and execute a lease agreement. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Actually, what is, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
What is the lifespan for this equipment?
Usually about ten years. And so after our lease is over, we have a dollar buyout, which we will likely opt to do. We'll maintain the equipment in good equipment, um, in good condition. Um, and then buy it out for a dollar and that way we get more life out of it instead of turning it back in and then paying for additional lease. It's a better life.
Right. So we get about four years of use, useful life on that equipment.
Four to five, to give or take, depend on the use.
Okay.
Thanks, ma'am.
All right. Any other questions? Roman? Kim? Joe? All right. Do we, uh, can, can we now and then write the, drive the, the, the middle wa- of that second page there, whatever, the fun one.
We can go in there anytime, Mayor.
I want the zero turn.
We recommend, we recommend mowing early.
That's right.
That's right.
All right. Do we, do we have a motion?
I'll give you a motion. Uh, I move to authorize city manager to finalize and execute the lease agreement.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. All in favor, right hand, please? And we are unanimous again. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, six A, Shelley?
End of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and there are no citizen speakers signed up.
Well, everybody seems to be bringing good news, so I should probably follow suit with that. Um, At Your Place, yes. At Your Place, uh, gave to you earlier a quarterly financial, um, sorry, quarterly investment report for both the, uh, citywide and also for the library endowment. So if you have any questions on those later, we can talk about that. Um, I did give you just one, uh, brief slide here, uh, just to give you a little bit of overview as of six thirty. Um, so this is just kind of a diversification of how our funds are invested right now, just so that you can see. So this is something that we actually do daily, um, constantly looking at what are rates? Um, where are we with our cash flow? What money do we need for projects and those kind of things to try to see how we can better diversify? Obviously, rev, uh, interest revenue is not one of our largest revenue sources and not something that we really rely on. Um, however, if we have the opportunity to, um, make a little bit more on interest and it's safe, then we'll do that for sure. Um, we are going to exceed our interest budget, believe it or not, um, in twenty twenty-two, but primarily because of some of the investments we made last year that are maturing this year. So it's kind of planned out, um, you know. The other thing that we do specifically on commercial paper investments is we will buy commercial paper that aligns maturity date with when we have a debt payment. So we already know that we have debt money set aside and so we're actually making a little bit of interest on sales tax or property tax money or however that does. So just kind of a tool, uh, that we use there. So, uh, just to update on rates, you can see that, uh, government pool rates, uh, taxable specifically in October, uh, point zero six. I remember bringing you those, uh, interest revenue numbers there, um, particularly to EIC. Uh, today they're at one point six eight, so, uh, quite a rebound there within just a few months. Uh, right now our ra- investments range from point five oh, um, though that was a good rate at the time we bought that investment. Some of those are, are coming up for maturity pretty soon, all the way up to three point oh eight. So we have some, some variety of investments out there, um, and just some different maturity dates that kind of line up with what our cash flow needs, so just want to give you a little short update on that. Okay, um, just a very quick update. I know that you guys have talked a lot about this, so we won't go through all of this. Um, but as far as the public safety facility and where we are, we've just, uh, submitted the final edit for our third working draft of the preliminary official statement. So that is back, um, with bond counsel and we'll be getting hopefully our final, um, draft, hopefully this week. Um, completed the land purchase obviously, which was good news. Um, we are, have sent back, um, all but one document for our S and P, uh, bond rating determination, which will take place on August first. So we'll have that call that morning and we should receive a bond rating from S and P by the ninth so that we will know kind of where we stand as far as going into, um, the sale of our bonds. So on the fifteenth, uh, we'll actually post our, uh, POS out for negotiated bond pricing. So we'll be to bring back to council on the twenty-third what that pricing is and then pass that ordinance for that. So we'll receive those funds on the fifteenth of September. Okay, uh, general fund, um, some good news stories here. So property tax collections, ten million seven oh three as of the end of June thirty, uh, June of twenty-two. Uh, as of today, uh, we have exceeded our property tax budget, um, by seventy-two thousand, so good news there. Um, a lot of that coming from prior year, um, taxes like, as we've talked about before. Um, sales tax still staying strong, seven million collected to date. Uh, that nine point three million is the amended budget that we passed in February. Um, July sales tax has been received, nine and a half percent still over fiscal year twenty-one. So right now we're estimating about nine point nine million, um, at year end. So nearly six hundred thousand better than our amended budget. Uh, remember though, we have a two-month lag, so it's going to be November before I can tell you exactly where sales tax is going to land. Just your categorical view here, um, so you can see it a little bit different. Uh, recreation revenues ninety-eight thousand better than where we budgeted to be at this point, um, behind last year. But do keep in mind that twenty twenty-one was a heavy RV travel year, so, uh, KSP had kind of a record year last year. Uh, services running better than budget still primarily due to EMS revenues. And overall fund, uh, one point three million ahead of where we estimated to be at this point, uh, primarily to sales tax and EMS revenues. And here's just your revenue by category and you can see our two big numbers there are trying to flatten out as we talk about. As we go through, collect more sales tax and property tax kind of seems to fall off. So I expect those to line up, uh, nicely with the way we budgeted them for twenty-two. Okay, general fund expenses, um, overall, um, supplies and services are behind budget. Um, gas, obviously the big driver in the supply category, eighty-seven thousand dollars higher than last year to date. Um, we are seeing that come down just a hair, but we're not banking on that, just kind of watching that weekly to see, uh, what those prices come in at. Uh, services include other professional services, um, some things regard, related to the bond process, which will be reimbursed. And then also, um, as EMS revenues are higher, EMS billing is higher because it's based on a percentage and the same with, uh, property tax services, uh, are a little bit higher at this point in the year. So that should flatten, um, as we fi- finish out the year. Uh, better than budget in maintenance, however, they are doing a lot of paving. So, uh, that number can change pretty drastically quickly and then transfers out of course are higher than last year because of that mid-year adjustment that we did. And here's your expenses by category, again, looking at personnel, um, budgeted at seventy point five percent. Right now we're at sixty-nine percent with sixty percent of that being public safety related. Um, everything else is lining up pretty nicely. Um, supplies running about five percent, budgeted at four point eight and gas again is in there. But remember that staff can do transfers from one line item to another to kind of keep that in line. So we really won't know how that compares to original budget till we get through the next month or so. Okay, moving on to the water fund. So, um, current sales are through May's consumption, so this includes June billing. Um, we're a little bit ahead on the water side, um, not, not significantly, uh, than where we estimated we should be. Um, we are running ahead of last year, which should be expected this time. Uh, sewer sales still being a really strong hundred and sixty-two thousand ahead of where we estimated it to be and also ahead of last year. But again, that's kind of a fixed cost, um, that just changes in April when we change our billing, so, um, not a lot of variable there. Here's your revenues by category, um, total fund, uh, better than where we estimated to be, largely again because of that, uh, strength in sewer sales. Um, right now we do expect to meet the budget for the overall water fund. However, we're watching that closely with just the inflation in general and, and staff has been doing a really good job to just compensate for the inflationary factors and they're seeing where they can. Um, so while water sales are a little bit ahead, about fifty-three thousand than where we were last year, um, consumption is actually lower and we've talked about that, um, over and over that really we're seeing citizens just really self-regulate when it comes to irrigation. Just your rainfall totals here, um, interesting that, um, rainfall average January to December for Curville is about thirty-two inches. Um, you can see the same six months, last year we were at thirteen and a half, which kind of lines up with there. Uh, but compared to last year, we're almost nine inches less than we were, um, January to June. So looking at that same period of time, so not fiscal year, but just calendar year, kind of lining up with how the averages look, so. Okay, overall expenses for the water fund, um, overall, a little bit better, uh, than where we expected to be at this point. Um, uh, again, note that we, you know, we've moved a little bit of money around to compensate for some of those inflationary issues and to cover some shortfalls. Um, early estimates, we kind of trend toward, we'll be probably finishing the year a little bit better than budget on expenses. But again, you know, as of this report, we still have three months left, so it's kind of hard to see, uh, you know, exactly what the impact of some of the inflationary factors that we're dealing with is going to have. Okay, quick look at the golf fund, um, seven percent ahead of last year in revenues. Um, again, the Heart of the Hills tournament is this week, so that usually has a pretty good, big impact on the course in general. Um, supply chain issues, we keep talking about that every month. Um, the resolution you guys just passed for the lease agreement is going to make a big difference. We've been waiting on that, uh, since October and there's a couple of other pieces of equipment that we're still waiting on at the golf course that we haven't received yet, so working on that. Hot fund remaining strong, uh, thirteen percent, uh, year-to-date ahead of the same period last year. Uh, remember June revenues are for May stays, a little bit different than, uh, on the sales tax side or it's two-month lag. Um, expecting about two hundred and sixty thousand better, uh, than budget on revenues, uh, for the year. And, um, again, gave you the chart so you can kind of see by month comparison, kind of how the, how the stays flow there. Okay, and lastly, uh, development services fund, again, this one is very difficult to budget, uh, fluctuates a little bit. We had a big revenue month in June, um, we're a hundred and eighty-eight thousand ahead of last year, still trending a little bit behind estimated budget, um, but that could change tomorrow just depending on what development is going on out there. Uh, expenses, uh, better than budget and also remember that we did budget a less, uh, smaller transfer amount for twenty-two given the estimation of the revenues that we had, so.
So can you remind me from our budget workshop? It seems like this is the second year we've been behind on development services, is that right?
It is, we were a little bit behind last year, um, and last year wasn't significant. Um, we have this transfer from the general fund, so the development services fund, remember, for financial reporting is part of the general fund. So it all gets rolled up. Um, for transparency, we separated out, um, into its own fund, so you can see specifically what we're collecting and what we're spending. The gap is the tran- is the transfer from the general fund. And based on what we had seen historically over the last few years and the growth there, the revenues that were budgeted for twenty-two prob- clearly were a little bit too aggressive and so we reduced our transfer from the general fund. So the general fund didn't have the same expense, but then the development services didn't have that revenue. Uh, so we changed that a little bit moving forward in twenty-three. We reduced those revenues, so you're going to see a bigger transfer out from the general fund to fill the gap. At the end of the day, it all gets rolled up into one, but we like it.
We want to line the numbers up a little closer.
Absolutely, right.
And remember, we split this out really for two reasons, transparency is both for the property taxpayer uh, in, in understanding that, um, you know, there, there are fees that pay for development services and those functions and also for the development community and recognizing that their fees aren't subsidizing the general fund, right? Their fees are for services provided for the development that, that they are, uh, the service demand they are, are requiring. It's really for kind of both parties.
Okay, little calendar update, um, changed just a little bit since I gave you this. So Friday late, um, I received the certified roll from Kirkad, so, uh, good news there. Spent the last day and a half kind of working through that. Um, hopefully we'll land on something tomorrow, I hope, because that gives us three days to finalize the budget document. Um, so, you know, no shortage of time.
So what was, what, are you going to?
I didn't bring a lot of that because I'm still working through that.
Between what, what was?
Between what we originally, so it went down from what we originally, um, saw back in April, um, and then also in June, but then it went up a little bit from our final report in June. So I don't know what the outcomes of some of those, uh, protests were, but it actually went up just a little bit from the one that I received at the end of June.
So our, our collections, when, when we file the budget, we're going to have a higher, well, no, because we have to sit the tax.
Yeah, your market value is higher.
It's work in progress.
Yeah. Market value is higher than last year.
Monday, you'll see Monday.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm working hard on that right now. Just landing on, there's a lot of factors, um, with tours consideration and those kind of things that we have to back out and then freezes and there's a lot of things we have to work through, so working hard on that. Um, we will file the budget on Friday. Um, it might be the last thing I do before I leave for the day, but we will file the budget on Friday.
Julie's going to file it with me on Friday. I might not file it till Sunday night, but we'll see.
We'll see. Um, August first, remember our S and P call? Um, so the ninth, uh, we'll be presenting the budget to you guys. Uh, also trying to set a resolution for the proposed property tax rate at that time. Um, and then the fifteenth, of course, we'll send our official statement out for bond pricing and then it will proceed from there, so, so far so good, um, everything is going smooth. Any questions?
Counsel, anybody? Roman says no, Kim says no, Joe?
Good luck, Julie.
Thank you.
Welcome to budget season.
Not good luck, I know that you'll, you'll present a good budget to us. Good luck on the amount of time it takes.
All right, I think we have come to the end of the evening. Anything for the good of the cause or anything that someone would like to put on a future agenda?
Uh, I have one, um, and you can bear with me just so I can give a little background for a future agenda item. Uh, just before this meeting and as we heard before, uh, we talked about the Employee Benefits Trust. Um, as you recall, it was created in two thousand and eight and when council created the trust, it's a, we created a governing document called the Declaration of Trust. And so before my first trust meeting, after being elected, I researched to understand more, um, about the background of it and understood that the declaration establishes three officer positions, a chair, vice chair and a secretary. And something that I noticed, um, is that one, the declaration hadn't been reviewed or revised since two thousand and eight and that the, it also provides that the mayor shall serve as the chair, mayor pro temp shall serve as the vice chair, and then this is where it gets complicated, that the secretary shall rotate every fiscal year among the members of council. It skips the place of mayor pro temp, um, since they're already the vice chair and goes on. So since two thousand and eight, council followed that at their, you know, first few meetings and then decided to establish a practice that we've been doing ever since then, which is to allow our wonderful city secretary to do that job. So I would like, since our secretary already handles all those duties like creating the agendas, minutes and giving out notices, um, I would like for council to, um, oh, and I've also spoken with our city attorney at this, once at length last year and then again briefly this year, um, and I'll allow him to speak for himself, but I do believe it's my understanding that there's no problem with doing this. So I would just ask that council would allow the city attorney and me and any other council member, if they're interested to meet to review that declaration of trust, to draft amendments and then return to council or the trust with proposed amendments to change that. Are there any questions, was that clear?
Does.
What do you want to change?
So the, the position of secretary because it's confusing right now, like whenever I started it, it says that the position of secretary is to be one of the council members, which rotates every fiscal year, skips mayor pro temp, all this kind of stuff. And to make it simpler, since the city secretary has been doing this pretty much ever since the trust was created, um, a little bit afterwards, I want to go ahead and to eliminate that confusion and to just put it out there and establish what we've been doing as a practice into the declaration of the trust, just say the city secretary does these duties.
Okay.
If there's anything else that the city attorney finds that we need to amend in that, we can do that.
Okay, so you're not wanting to change?
I'm not wanting to abolish it or anything, just to make the officers clear and anything else that a city attorney deems necessary for that.
Make it, uh, do what we are actually.
Right, what we're doing right now, just put it into the actual document.
Do we have a second?
Is there any member that wants to join in that or?
Well, I mean, I don't know, I, I, I feel like, I feel like you've pretty much laid out everything. I don't know that it's going to take a lot of research or anything to do. I would trust the, the city attorney to be able to just, to just make those changes and, and bring any changes back to us. I don't know that we need to convene a committee or, or anything like that.
I'm happy to second it, have it, have it on agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, in a future agenda, whenever we get that done.
Agenda, all right, all in favor, right hand please? And it is unanimous, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Anything for the good of the cause? All right, I want to thank staff for last night, it was late and, uh, we've had a second night together, so, uh, hopefully tomorrow night you can do something really fun, so. All right, at seven oh seven, we are adjourned, thank you all.